Welcome to Chelmsford City Council’s Virtual VE Day celebrations. Although we’ve had to change our plans because of the coronavirus outbreak, the 75th Anniversary of Victory in Europe Day is a momentous occasion that we’d really like to share with you. We may not be able to have street parties, but we’ve brought people together from our community so that we can all mark this historic day at home with many of the things you’d expect from a civic ceremony. The 8th of May 1945 was truly a date to remember as people all over the country came together after almost six years of war. It’s hard to imagine how people felt. The Bishop of Chelmsford wrote in the local paper that: “Relief, pride, thanksgiving and sympathy are some of the emotions which has swept us off our feet.” We’ll be hearing our memories and accounts of Victory in Europe Day from our city in the course of this video. Pupils from local schools will bring us some memories of older residents, we’ll have a taste of the entertainment of the time, including a very fitting performance from one of our current heroes, Broomfield nurse and singer Asher Louise. In a moment, I’ll be reading an extract from Sir Winston Churchill’s famous VE Day speech, but first, please join me to listen to the last post played by Alison Smart at the Essex Yeomanry Band. This is an extract from the speech given by Sir Winston Churchill on VE Day 1945. “My dear friends, this is your hour. This is not a victory of a party or class. It’s a victory of the great British nation as a whole. We were the first in this ancient island to draw the sword against tyranny. After a while, we were left all alone against the most tremendous military power that has ever been seen. We were all alone for a whole year. There we stood, alone. Did anyone want to give in? Were we downhearted? The lights were out and the bombs came down, but every man, woman and child in the country had no thought of quitting the struggle. London can take it, so we came back after long months from the jaws of death, out of the mouth of hell while all the world wondered. When shall the reputation and faith of this generation of Englishmen and women fail? I say that in the long years to come, not only will the people of this island, but of the world, wherever the bird of freedom chirps in human hearts, look back to what we’ve done and they will say: ‘Do not despair. Do not yield to violence and tyranny. March straightforward and die if need be unconquered.’ Now we have emerged from one deadly struggle. A terrible foe has been cast on the ground and awaits our judgement and mercy. And now, please join me in the nation’s toast to the heroes of World War II. To those who gave so much, we thank you.” On this day, let us remember those people of nations across the world who gave their lives, at home and abroad, whose sacrifice enables us to enjoy peace and freedom today. Let us remember those who returned to their homes, wounded, physically and mentally, and the friends and family who cared for them. Let us remember those who returned to restore relationships and rebuild working lives after years of conflict and turmoil. Let us remember the families that lost loved ones. Let us remember the service and civilian personnel of all nations who fought, suffered and died during several years of war. Let us remember those in reserved occupations and other brave people who kept those at home safe. The doctors and nurses who cared for the wounded. The women and men who worked in the fields and factories, who all played such a vital role in the war effort. Let us remember them all.
There’ll be bluebirds over The white cliffs of Dover Tomorrow, just you wait and see The shepherd will tend his sheep The valley will bloom again And Ginny will go to sleep In his own little room again There’ll be bluebirds over The white cliffs of Dover Tomorrow, just you wait and see
This is an extract of Essexman’s Diary on page 2 of the Essex Chronicle on the 11th of May 1945 about Chelmsford on VE night. Shortly before midnight on VE night, a lone cyclist could have been seen making his way with difficulty through the festive crowds. It was your diarist conscientiously gathering material for a report on the public rejoicings. Chelmsford did extremely well. Really, the citizens deserve congratulations. Many private homes put up wonderful shows in short time. I saw illuminated crowns in a cluster of fairy lights, red, white and blue V-signs that winked on and off, houses floodlit while lovers had their lights on in every room and even the porch, attracting ‘Isn’t that lovely?’ cries from the spectators without. Grammophones were busy with, curiously, the songs mostly of the last war, such as ‘Tipperary’, ‘There’s a Long, Long Trailer Winding’, ‘Keep the Home Fires Burning’ and one or two of the more melancholy pieces beloved by troops of both wars. Over the far horizon, the sky was red. Red with the lights of London. God bless them. It’s many a day since we’ve seen that reflection of happiness. The searchlights all around were doing their dance on their own. Mysterious ghostly waving in the sky as if the very phantoms themselves had been celebrating and were now swinging it to the music of some astral orchestra. And the pubs. My word, the folks were enjoying themselves in there. Dancing, singing and making one Dickens of a noise bless their hearts. I thought to myself, fancy. People are doing this all over England tonight.
I just got word from the guy who heard from the girl next door to me. The guy she met just likes to pet and if it’s you to a T. So don’t sit under the apple tree with anyone else but me till I come marching home. Don’t you sit under the apple tree with anyone else but me. Anyone else but me. No, 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 not a single soul but me. No, no, no. Don’t you sit under the apple tree with anyone else but me till I come marching home. Don’t go walking down lover’s lane with anyone else but me. Anyone else but me. Anyone else but me. No, no, no. Don’t go walking down lover’s lane with anyone else but me till I come marching home.
Don’t sit under the apple tree with anyone else but me. Anyone else but me. Anyone else but me. No, no, no. Don’t sit under the apple tree with anyone else but me till I come marching home.
I was at Marsham School. When the sirens went off, we had to go to the air raid shelters in the playgrounds. I don’t remember having any fear of the war. If we heard the sirens, then we’d just went down the air raid shelters. I can remember those lucky sisters. There were five of them, all unmarried, and lived in a big house on Arnhem Road. We had a big party in their garden, tea and food. They organised games for the children and we had egg and sperm races.
We heard in the radio that the war was over. I can remember my brother putting flags in the trellis in the garden. He said, ‘Oh, it won’t be long until dad gets home.’ I remember everyone being so excited and my brother were throwing flags from the sturgeon on King’s Road. We all celebrated in North Avenue, the bit called the Banjo. There was a bonfire built in the green and food came out of houses and was put on the tables. It was the last time I remember sitting in the pram. Then I fell asleep. I was five years old. My dad didn’t get back for another six months. My mum said it was because he had to get the boat back from Burma. When he did finally arrive back though, there was lots of tension in the house because mum was used to being the boss.
My next door neighbour watched in Marconi’s and I can remember him making all the children little wooden cars. I lived in Marsham. I don’t remember us having street parties, but I do know there was one in Oaklands Drive which I went to. There’s a teacher there who had an orchard and he made toffee apples and we bombed for apples. I think different areas of Chelmsford did different things. I can remember there were races in Godlay Gardens and we raced up and down there to Handlet Road.
I was nine years old and I can remember dancing and lots of music. The ladies laid out the food and they wore hats and aprons. I lived on Corporation Road and I remember the cheering and shouting. There was a street party in Woodlam Road. There were three greens as the houses were in a cross shape. There was a marquee in one, a bonfire on the second, and someone had made a horse about ten feet long. You put a ten shilling note in its mouth and it went into its stomach. We had a porch over our front door. We made a giant V shape and moss code under it and it was all lit up.
On this day 75 years ago, the Second World War ended. But before it did, Winston Churchill, the Prime Minister, wanted to check that there was sufficient beer around to allow everyone to celebrate on that day. And not until he got that assurance was he prepared to announce that Victory in Europe Day would be the 8th of May 1945. A day of rejoicing, but a day also to reflect. A day to reflect on the part that the whole population of Great Britain had played in that victory. In particular, the essential part in that victory played by women in Chelmsford, the women who worked in the great factories, making radios in Marconi’s, making munitions, making ball bearings in Hoffmann’s. Reflect on the experience of bombing over the past six years. 17th of May 1941. Direct hits on Marconi, killing seventeen workers and damaging 250 of the surrounding properties. On 16th of June 1944, when an unmanned V-2 rocket came over and made a direct hit on Hoffmann’s, killing no less than thirty people and a further nine in the surrounding area. Reflecting at the end of that day of rejoicing as everyone listened to the broadcast of King George VI on BBC Radio. The knowledge that everything was at stake, our freedom, our independence, our existence as a people, but the knowledge also that in defending ourselves, we were defending the liberties of the whole world. We knew that if we failed, the last remaining barrier against a worldwide tyranny would have fallen in ruins. But we did not fail. We kept faith and unity with our great allies. That faith and unity have carried us to victory. King George VI.
Let’s take a boat to Bermuda. Let’s take a plane to St Paul. Let’s take a kayak to Gracie or Nyack. Let’s get away from it all. Let’s take a trip in a trailer. No need to come back at all. Let’s take a powder to Boston or Shutter. Let’s get away from it all. We’ll travel round from town to town. We’ll visit every state. Ah Ricky, I love you sweet, be all the forty-eight. Let’s go again to Niagara. This time we’ll look at the fall. Let’s leave our heart here, get out of our appeal. Let’s get away from it all. We’ll travel round from town to town. We’ll visit every state. Ah Ricky, I love you sweet, be all the forty-eight. Let’s go again to Niagara. This time we’ll look at the fall. Let’s leave our heart here, get out of our appeal. Let’s get away from it, really away from it all. Let’s get away from it all, away from it all. Away from it all.
I was born in 1928 and in 1937 moved to Chelmsford when my father was a police constable. My first war memory was my father being recalled from a holiday because of the Munich crisis. He started to dig a shelter in the back garden with some help from a young probationary policeman. We saw the blitz on London from our garden, the searchlights and the sound of gunfire. When the ore refinery was a bomb some twenty miles away, we could see the fires. Although I did not feel in direct danger, we spent most nights in the now redug shelter in the garden until winter came and it became cold and damp. Then my father built an indoor one with tightly fitted blackout shutters and a coal fire. It was quite cosy. As boys, we were obsessed with aircraft recognition and anything military and did not understand the politics of war. But it was a different matter for a parent who had to cope with food and fuel shortages. But there was a tremendous cooperative feeling with people working for the national good. Women were being directed into war work, but my mother with two young sons and a husband to look after, bogged their twelve-hour shifts, but found herself required to take in lodgers instead. Every fortnight, two or three airmen were billeted on us while they attended a radio course at Marconi’s. We celebrated the end of the war with much jubilation, with hundreds of people dancing and drinking in Tyndale Square. We managed to make cakes and jellies and sandwiches from our rations. We dismantled the Morrison Shelter and the steel top was placed on the road and a fire lit, around which we danced. The next day, we found the heat had melted the tarmac and the shelter top had stuck to the road.
Some of them never came home to fanfares. They dumped their kit bags down at the door, kissed their wives and let their children, wrestled them down to the kitchen floor, switched on the TV, poured out a whisky, searched for the local football score. Some of them skipped the quayside welcome, dodged the bunting and cannonade, make their landfall in silent harbours, nod to the coastguard Buddy Vade for the searchlight of public scrutiny, like those engaged in the smuggling trade. Some of them land at lonely airfields, far removed from the celebration, hang their flying gear in a locker, cadja lift to the railway station, make for home and take for granted the short-lived thanks of a grateful nation. Some of them miss the royal salute, the victory parade along the Mall, the flypast, the ships in formation passing the cheering crowds on the harbour wall, remembered only by friends and relatives. Some of them never came home at all.
A prayer for the 75th anniversary of VE Day. Let us pledge ourselves anew to the service of God and our fellow men and women that we may help, encourage and comfort others and support those working for the relief of the needy and for the peace and welfare of the nations. Lord God our Father, we pledge ourselves to serve you and all humankind in the cause of peace, for the relief of want and suffering and for the praise of your name. Guide us by your spirit. Give us wisdom. Give us courage. Give us hope. And keep us faithful now and always. Amen. O Lord our God, as we remember, teach us the ways of peace. As we treasure memories, teach us to hope. As we give thanks for the sacrifices of the past, help us to make your future in this world until your kingdom comes. Amen.
A heartfelt thank you to everyone who has sent us videos and recordings to make this event possible, giving us a chance...
giving us a chance to remember a defining day in the history of our nation. Thanks too to everyone at home for staying in and keeping safe for this historic event that we had all hoped to spend with each other at memorial services, parades, and street parties. Even though it’s not what we’d originally planned, we’ve found new ways to join together and thank the Second World War generation and to celebrate on this special day. At 7pm, we’ll bring you the cry for peace around the world and the bells of Chelmsford Cathedral. But for now, we’ll raise a glass or a cup to those who served and sacrificed so much.